So where is it again? It keeps you guessed.
Yeah, and then welcome to Reed Field is the.
Alright, so where they look for guests.
Doesn't have my stuff loaded that I downloaded. Son of a gun.
Do you have to type it in? It doesn't just show up, does it?
No, you type it in. Well, I mean Reed Field guest should show up.
But that's not.
There it is, I think it's there.
There it is now, didn't it first yet? Oh, yes.
One appears to be there.
Be able to remember that.
Did you say welcome?
Well, I don't have to remember it now.
Let's see how fast it downloads. That was pretty darn fast, wow.
Yeah, it was speed test. I haven't done one recently. It was about 400 over 600 or so. But that was, that was in my office, so it might be less up here.
Are you connecting Catherine?
I, well, instantly. That's really unusual.
Yeah, it won't connect me.
And it instantly downloaded 64 pages. 13. Why does she have 116 on her date? So is it Dave or Steve this quarter?
It's, it's me.
It's Steve?
It's me. Steve, you sound so sad.
I'll pass this over if you guys want to sign it and then we'll just give it to Steve to make sure it's correct. Jaren, let me know when you get in.
Which one is this?
This is all working for me, so can you start?
This one right here, Steve. It's right here.
What's your number though?
It's today's.
Today, so you don't have to.
You're not reporting on it.
We don't report on it, okay.
You just need to look it over and leave, sign it and leave it for Teresa.
Understood.
So you don't have to come in tomorrow.
Those apply to Steve.
Got it.
Okay, as soon as I turn my phone off. Okay. No.
It should be, yeah, well, it might be that this is.
Everybody's on the moonwalk. Yeah, it's the tonight.
Oh, the Reed Field Library.
Library, uh, there's supposed to be snow showing, but there's no snow.
There's no snow.
So there is walking.
Where are they walking to?
The trails. Moon, it's because it's a full moon tonight.
Okay.
That's why it's been such a great day.
Okay, are we all set?
Well, I, yeah, let's see here.
Was that a wait, Eric?
Um, give me one split a second.
Sit down.
I know, the sooner we start, the sooner we finish.
Okay, I'm almost ready, yeah.
Wow, I think we're live. So good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Reed Field Select Board on January 13th, 2025. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:32. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda, our regular meeting items, number 25056, minutes from December 9th and December 18th. I would entertain a motion.
I came in late to the joint meeting. I was wondering if I'm allowed to vote on those or should I abstain from the joint meeting because I only saw a partial of it?
I think you count as present.
Make a motion and approve the minutes as presented for December 9th and 18th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Another fine job, Angelica, thank you. Dave.
What?
Dave wants to say all those in favor.
I was anticipating, I was anticipating.
All those in favor. It's unanimous.
He's all used to be in the chair, he's the chair of the assessment.
One autopilot. Yeah, we skip those formalities now.
The second item is 25-57, warrants 25 through 28, which will be Jaren reviewing for us.
Right. So we have warrant 25 for 66, 698, 83. And we have warrant 26 for 45, 691, 56, which is payroll. And warrant 25 was wholly unremarkable, which I think is an amazing thing. Means we're just doing what we need to do. But I am happy to point anything out that someone has a question on, but I did not see anything worthy of note.
I'll make a motion and approve warrants 25 and 26 in the sum of $112,390.39.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, as stated. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, that is unanimous. They have all previously been signed by the whole board and reviewed. But this is the official notification to the public of them and entering into the minutes. Okay, Jaren, next one.
The next one is Steve.
Next one's Steve.
I have the next one, 27, 28.
Well, excuse me, Steve, here you go.
It's all good.
If we're done over there.
I heard the coffee perk and I looked over and Angelica looked at me and I said, yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Oh my god.
Alright, so that was for, 27 and 28 were for a total of $481,064.68. Vast majority of it was, the RSHU was $363,000 and change. And then the plow contract with Horn was $46,730, 732. So that was about 80% of the total, just those two. And then the only other big ones of note, $8,097.50 to New England Salt Company, we know what that's for. Northeast Roofing was $8,040. Erica talked to us about that last meeting, that was the roof in the town office. And then Maine Municipal Employee Health, that's just our health insurance for employees, is $8,417. Again, all these are sort of changes, you know, 30 cents and so forth. And then there's a $63.90 to Maine Municipal Association also. I assume that's our dues?
Uh, yeah, it should be.
Is that yearly or is that quarterly? I forgot, I didn't, forgot to ask.
It's not yearly. It's either quarterly or semi-annually. I'll check on that one.
Okay, I was just wondering if we're getting our money. We probably have no choice but to do that, right?
Uh, it's, we get a lot of value out of it with trainings and.
That was for workers' comp insurance.
Is that workers' comp?
Yep.
Okay.
The second one or the first?
The $63.90 and 40 cents.
Oh, okay, that was workers' comp. Alright, I thought that was dues.
And so that's probably annual.
Okay.
Uh, no, that's, that's probably the first half.
First half, okay.
Yep, no, I wasn't looking at the details, sorry.
That's okay. That's why we have it, so we can check on things.
That's right.
Cool. I would entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve warrants 27 and 28 for a total of $481,064.68.
Second.
Who wants the second?
I got it.
Steve's got it. Okay, I have a motion and a second for the stated purpose. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, it is unanimous. And just so the public knows, Steve is reviewing the next warrant tonight. So that will be ready to go at our next meeting. Alright, moving on to the next item is communications for 30 minutes. We have select board communications first, general information and goal check in. If anyone has anything they'd like to share.
As far as the goals go, we got a good win with, apparently Scott's gonna take the contract one way, so that buys us some time. I did have some good discussions with, about those contracts. I know we had talked about the possibility of splitting that a few different ways. And I'm not sure that, that would really work, like bidding it out that way. I think that would have to be a thing like three different guys that worked well together did it. So that would kind of come back to the other thing that we had a pretty good discussion about is, is kind of how that it's bid. So in other words, you know, we require certain equipment and a certain person and a face on it. But would it be, if somebody bids that contract, they're ultimately responsible for it. And if they go out and sweep the roads with a broom, if the job gets done, you know, so are we limiting there? Or could one person bid the contract regardless of what they're, they've done in the past? Might not even really be a contractor, but to be the one who gets bonded and he is the one who is responsible for coordinating those people to do the contract. And that might be, I don't know how we'd, we'd write that or, or present it. But I think that's something that, that we might want to look at.
So it just have to be part of, you know, I was just thinking, it would just have to be part of the bid instructions that would, they could talk about.
Oh, right. I mean, you put your specs on what, what, what needs to happen on the roads. And, and not so much planted on, you know, now it's all where you have to have this piece of equipment, you have to have this piece of equipment. But, you know, ultimately, the job needs to be done with you and the specs kind of adhere you to that.
Steve?
So I was just curious, with the contract you were talking about, then did they say that would make it easier and more appealing to put in a bid?
I, I think it may, because you might get somebody who's just an investor, who, who, maybe he's never plowed snow before at all. But he'd be willing to put the money out and bond himself and he can, however he gets the people to do it, that's his problem. As long as he adheres to the contract. So, I mean, we can get more in depth with that, but it's, that's just the tip of the iceberg, I guess, that, that thinks that would discuss.
It's really cool that you're having the discussion with him. You know, it's nice to be having another year now. I very much appreciate Scott.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm getting time to have him come into the office and ask me what the complaints were and I'm just saying, I got nothing for you, man, nothing. It's, it's been great. I mean, he's done, done an exceptional job this year and last year too, so.
That's awesome. And I, I know we don't want to get into a long discussion now, but you had mentioned, Eric, that Scott thought that we could probably do the town plowing with different equipment than what we are requiring now also.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Smaller equipment.
Yeah, I mean, the, the mix, I mean, and this is, you know, the mix will depend on who does the work to some extent.
The hottest part with that, with doing it all with smaller equipment is sand. You can't, you can't, you'd be back at the town office every 10 minutes with three yards of sand in the truck. It's not so much the plowing part, that most of the time we don't get three foot snowstorms. So you don't need that huge truck to plow the snow, it's the sand issue. You know, you, you have to have something bigger to carry the sand.
But you might not have to have three or four of the something bigger.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So something along the lines of, this is my company, this is my experience, this is my equipment, I think this meets your needs, maybe is what you're going for, as opposed to you must have A, B, C, D.
Yeah, right, exactly. I mean, it's, if it's in the spec and in the job, what, what I'm supposed to do to adhere to that contract. Like I said, if I'm out there with 50 guys in a broom sweeping the snow off the road, if it's at spec when I get done, it shouldn't matter how I got it done.
As long as it's safe. 50 guys on the road would probably not need the insurance.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of the guys used to do in the safety part too. I mean, we've, we've kind of created our own animal here of people expecting to be able to drive on black hot top in the worst snowstorm of the year at all times with a vehicle that's not adequate to drive in that storm. So maybe we need to disappoint people a little bit, for one. Tell them it's snowing out. I'm sorry.
See, I, I would love to have that discussion, actually.
Yeah, I think that's a big thing.
It's like, you drive up, I mean, when you look at the roads, you go to school driveway, it is white. It's just white, you know, and we, we dump crazy amounts of salt as soon as we get anything, you know. And I think it would be acceptable to say, you know, I mean, try and make the road safe, but you know, if it's an ice storm, maybe you just stay home for a little while, you know.
Well, some people have to go to work, but I think having that discussion is certainly worthwhile.
And they just drive slower.
Yeah, and you get into that, I mean, I've always had that. My thoughts are, we live in Maine, and if you know you gotta get out in the middle of a snowstorm, you probably shouldn't be driving something that doesn't get out. That's kind of my thought, but.
Well, thank you for having that discussion with folks and, and let's not put it off, well, I won't be here, but.
It will be ongoing.
Let's not put it off till this time next year to be talking about it. It seems like this should be something we attack in the summer and fall.
Right, it's just bought us another year, should.
Especially if you want to have.
Got the ball rolling and let's keep, keep hammering.
Have the standard conversation with the public, you know, do we want to keep the gold standard? Are we okay with silver?
Well, Catherine, you can always come back to the public comment.
Oh, sure, that'd be great. Okay, moving on. Anybody else? Sean wants to tell us about the moonwalk.
Yeah, well, it's tonight, so the moonwalk is the library put together, was supposed to be snow showing, but as you all know, there's not much of that out there, so they're walking in the full moonlight tonight around town. I can't remember exactly where they're going, but I did want to tell you something.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna talk about Burns Night, which is on Saturday, January 26th. I heard there's a Scott gonna be there. There was some talking, so it starts at 6, oh, wait a minute, is it 6 or 6:30?
It's a potluck, right?
Yep. It starts at 6 and it goes till 8 o'clock, so here the 25th of the town office.
Excellent.
Great.
Saturday night.
Anyone else?
I just want to mention real quick how nice it is to have the light over on that side of the parking lot. Especially now that it's dark during our meetings and there's no ice. It's much safer on that side of the parking lot now, so it's greatly appreciated.
You're welcome.
And that's only been 10 years-ish?
Oh, more than that. It was, it was broken before I got here, so.
Well, and it, it won't annoy the neighbors who are concerned about that, because it's a nice downward facing light. Okay, we'll move on to staff communication, town manager's report, treasurer's report, and then a brief report out from the CEO that was included in the packet. And the other two reports are on the website for anyone who's interested.
Okay, we'll try to run through this pretty quickly. December was a fairly quiet month. We still got a lot accomplished. But with the holidays, it does get to be a little bit thin at times as far as productivity. So I'll just say, budget work is an ongoing priority. I've been working on that for, 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 you know, probably close to a month now, pretty actively. Yeah, amongst other projects. But the, the joint CIP discussion that we had, I said this at the budget committee meetings and I'll say it again here. It was, it was a very productive meeting. I really enjoyed that. And it was very helpful to have that direction and that discussion happen between the boards. And I think we've got a very strong direction as a town as far as addressing our capital needs, so that's a very positive thing. Wage discussions took place in December. We met with representatives from the labor union and we have a tentative agreement for a 3% increase effective July 1st, 2025. So that's a tentative. I, I don't know, they haven't voted on it yet, but I did talk to the finance officer today and they're at least discussing it. So I'm not sure what we're gonna get, or when we're gonna get that from the union, but it's underway. We have worked more on reconciling our zoning maps with existing GIS layers. And the full set of changes are now in the hands of the GIS company, so that's handed off. They're working on the changes. And again, it's later than I wanted, but we're in process to get that taken care of. So we can have a go-live sometime in the next couple of months with the public site. We had a great holiday staff meeting. I again want to thank the board for contributing to the, to the holiday baskets. Cookies were great, everything was great. Phytium fiber at the town office, it's been a, a good positive thing for us since it happened on Friday. And it will, I think the most important thing, allow us to explore other technology options and deployment as we go forward. I also want to acknowledge the passing of John Knox in Portland after a fall at his home. He was, you know, 40-year resident at the town of Reed Field and involved with different boards and committees. I know he sent multiple communications to all of you, but he was my neighbor, but also just a, you know, a longtime community member. I wanted to acknowledge his, his passing. Moving on to maintenance and transfer station activities, winter maintenance has been very smooth despite some messy storms. They, they work hard to make sure that, that we do have a high level of service. And the sloppy wet weather, the icy slushy stuff just makes it that much harder. But that's all we've had the past five years really, so they're getting pretty good at handling it. And as Dave said, our current contractor will be continuing on for the fourth year of the contract. The town office roof was repaired. In addition to that, we also had gaskets, chimney flashing, snow breaks and some other items installed on the roof. So while they were up there, we did everything that we could possibly think of, so we're probably good there for 25 years, I hope. The broken light pole was replaced. We're going through all the same things. One of the key things there is we're also replacing the timer. We have mechanical timers here and at the library. Those are both going to be replaced with digital models, which will give us a lot more control and reliability. The mechanical ones would just sometimes, the little twist knot thing would just fall off after 20 or 30 or 50 cycles. And so we'd have to constantly maintain that, but this should be better. And will give us some efficiency as well as more, more control. Maintenance for staff repaired several cracks in the masonry of the records vault. We had settling there and we had probably, in, in the wall gap, we probably had close to three eights in places. And there was, you know, outside sheathing, but you could see daylight if you turned the light off. I'd been in the vault for a couple of months, thinking I could hear traffic. Like, where is that coming from? That's not, shouldn't happen that way. And when we finally figured it out, it was that large crack in the, in the wall. There's also one at the base, but that one wasn't letting, you know, too much in, but except for, you know, insects and things. But that's all been taken care of and we're keeping them busy with winter work, including that kind of maintenance. And then Matt Sims and I met with engineers to discuss the possible new salt sand building. In December, and planning work is underway for that, looking at site options. So 100% behind the board in that direction, we're not gonna let this sit. We're gonna keep moving on it as if we wanted to get it done this spring. A little bit less pressure than that, but we'll be moving forward actively on, on, on that piece because it is really important. Community services, activities and projects, the age-friendly group is continuing to be very active and they have Reed Field U pretty well squared away. Senior emergency kits are being deployed and a mailing will go out this week on that. And the smoke detector program is coming back. They've had some help from Jen Worthing, which has been fantastic. She really has stepped into that role fully, not just the rec sports, but age-friendly and other community activities. She participates with the senior cafe, all that stuff, so that's been great. She's also been working, this isn't in the report, but on some winter activities that I hope can happen to keep us from, you know, going insane. Even if there's no snow, we can still do some outdoor things. And then staff are also working, and this includes Jen and Melissa, on developing a universal background check policy for any community volunteers that engage with youth. And that includes libraries. and that includes library volunteers, coaches, referees, anybody. We've needed this for a long time, and I'm, I'm grateful to have staff that can actually work on it because it's just not something I've had time for, but it's essentially important. So that's gonna be happening soon. And then last thing relates to planning board activity. I met with Paula, Jack, and Chip to review questions the state of Maine had about our LD two thousand and three changes to the land use ordinance. They were just a little bit confused by some of the language we, we used. We, we'll be giving them a response. I was concerned because we did get grant money to, to write that, and I didn't want to have to give any of that back, so beyond that, I also want to follow state law. But we clarified that, and I think we'll be fine going forward. So that's my town manager's report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great job. I think the community program director is working out just like we had hoped, giving you more time and allowing more things to get done.
Yeah, it, it's been, it's been great. Things are happening better and more things are happening, so.
That's great.
And of course, we're always running into little bumps, but that's the way it is with any position and anything. The more we do, the more we learn. You can't learn without making mistakes sometimes, so there's a little bit of that, too. But Jen's been great. So moving on to the treasurer's report, check reconciliation is in process for the month of December. That's a different opening statement than we usually have. We have about a four hundred dollar difference that we have not been able to fully reconcile yet, but we should have that done in the next week. And outside of that one difference, we have nothing extraordinary. We just haven't had the time to really sit down and figure out what that discrepancy is between our trio accounts and our manual reconciliation that we've done. But we do have a draft, or a, a, a close number within four hundred dollars in the report here. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that we were still working on that piece. Investments, the treasurer and finance officer are scheduled to meet with Sam Tippett from Kennebec Wealth Management. They manage our trust fund reserves and our investment for those assets, and that'll be happening this week. The, we're also going to be meeting with Chris, yeah, not Kristen, with Chris Simmons in the near future to talk about alternative investment options, because she does do that for a living, and I'm hoping we can find something that's a little bit more viable than, than CDs and SEDARs, although it looks like rates are stabilizing, so maybe we'll be able to keep our four percent through the fiscal year, but we'll see. In any event, it's worth doing that exercise. And then with respect to the budget, we're well underway, but we're still working with a lot of uncertainties at this time. So we do have a, a first draft budget, but there are pieces that haven't been completed, and I'll point some of those out, but for the most part, we just don't have all the information I'd want to have to be very comfortable, but that'll come in time as we work through that budget process. The next budget meeting is the twenty-second of January, and that's gonna cover the second set of departments. This report covers the month of December, and expenses should be about fifty percent. They never are exactly, but they're usually right around there. Real estate payments are up for the month and down for the year-to-date, excuse me, and for the year-to-date, and that's actually a second month of increase in a row where we've outperformed the prior year. So that's a good sign, that means people are likely paying early. So that's a positive. Transfer station fees are down for the month but up slightly for the year-to-date. Motor vehicle revenues are down for the month but remain up for the year-to-date. And total receipts are down for the month but on track for the year-to-date. So things are, there's little variances here and there, but generally speaking, I'm not surprised by anything or alarmed by anything. And really, that's about it. I think the, the noteworthy, as I said, real estate payments are up fifty-one percent over December of twenty twenty-three, so that's a, quite a, quite a big chunk, but again, people are paying early, so. That's my report, happy to take any questions.
I have one on the expense summary report, which is the fourth page.
Yep.
It says that the trust funds, special revenue, and capital reserve funds all have a negative unexpended balance. Is that because we've been transferring things?
That's because we, we haven't transferred, I believe, if I wanted to look at that, so expense negative, so we have year-to-date net. That's interesting, I'm not sure why that shows that way. It shouldn't, it shouldn't show that way, or at least, I don't think it should. I'll ask Teresa why that is showing as a negative.
Okay.
Normally, those would show as being budgeted but unexpended because we usually hold off on those until, until we get to the audit process, but I'll, I'll check in on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Excellent job, Eric. Did anyone have any questions on the code enforcement memo that was in our packet? Interesting to me, just to note for the public, we had essentially the same number of building and plumbing permits and about the same income compared to last year in the same time period.
Yeah, and that tracks with what we were just talking about at the assessors meeting, that things are starting to stabilize. We're not seeing a lot of stuff moving, people are still doing mental work, but there's nothing really extraordinary happening in the town of Reedfield right now.
That's interesting. It's always nice to have that report, and it's out there for the public if they want to see that. Is that also posted on the website somewhere, Eric, or just in our?
It's in the packet, yeah, just in the packet.
It might be interesting to have on a CEO page if we have one. Just, you know, public interest.
Yeah, no, I'll look at adding that.
Just to make more work for someone like Angelica to post, sorry.
By someone like Angelica, if you mean Angelica, then yes.
Well, then we don't mind it all because she's capable.
But it's a, it's a small task, and it would go a long way, I think, so.
A big thank you to Chip for a concise and interesting report. Moving on to our next item of business, it is the boards, committees, commissions, and departments minutes, and there were a lot. And the thing that I noticed most is that they are all current, and we're getting draft minutes from almost everybody. So that's a huge shift for all of these boards and committees, and a huge thank you again to all those folks for making that big shift in the paradigm. And they're interesting to read as well. And do they all get posted online?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they do. I do, I just do my work, but she's always there.
Perfect. That's a huge thing, they, you know, just makes for a lot of transparency and keeps people happy and gives them something to read, and then if you want to complain that we're not doing something, we can show you, well, here we are. So public communication, we have five minutes for any members of the public. We have one person online and no one present in the room.
Can I, can I convey some public comments? Or just a quick question to maybe clarify? I had some, a few people ask about the additional bill from Goral Palmer on the sidewalk. If, will that be exceeding Article seventeen in the end for the total price of the sidewalk? And if so, how will that work? Will we have to have another warrant article to cover the, the extra costs? Or?
Yeah, so, so it won't. The, the way we looked at that, I did, I did check that out to make sure that we weren't gonna be in a position where we'd have to go back to town meeting due to that bill. So we are okay there. We did have an up to amount, and we also have the additional sidewalk reserve that was already appropriated.
Fifty thousand.
So the fact that that money is already in the account, already appropriated, we're okay there.
Okay.
And, and if, if, if we do get to the end of the project and something needs to change, we can certainly look at that, but I, I don't believe we'll get to that situation. I think we're gonna be in a pretty good spot now that that last hurdle on the planning money is figured out, so.
Great, thank you.
I just want to build on that. I really liked the comment that you had at our last meeting. Was that our, our own meeting at the fire station about future contracts having a clause in them that, you know, if you don't notify us ahead of time, we're not paying, that's your fault. I know that's oversimplified, but.
But, but it's not inaccurate, yeah. It's, it's, it's a good policy and a good approach to have.
Right. And, you know, not something you might be aware of until you get blindsided like we did. So as you were saying earlier, we learn from things that come up, and then we don't let them happen again. All right, moving on to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. We have a resignation from the rec board of Jeff Carlson. This is item twenty-five dash oh five eight. I would entertain a motion to accept.
Can I just make a motion for both of them?
We also have a, a resignation from the rec committee, also from Amy Tyrion.
Well, I would make a motion to approve these resignations from Jeff Carlson and Amy Tyrion, but thank them for their service over the last few years.
Second, make one point. We need to get discussion.
Yes.
I just wanted, these are two from the same committee at the same time. There is no connection, and everything's cool.
Okay.
These, these folks.
There's no mutiny.
Yeah, they, they, it's just they haven't been able to engage the way they wanted to, and it's been an ongoing thing, so they were just kind of, I think, waiting for us to have the capacity maybe to have, to step back. So I think that the success that we're finding with our staff is not a direct correlation, but I just wanted to say there's no, there's no relationship between these, and the, the rec committee is not in, in crisis or anything like that, so.
And this does open up two terms, each ending in twenty twenty-seven on June thirtieth.
Yes, and these are good positions. I mean, I'll just put a pitch in and say, and Sean will probably say the same thing, but this board has always been active, it's always been enthusiastic, it's, it's one of the more fun, engaging committees to be on, I think, and it's gotten, it's gotten easier. We now have staff support there where there wasn't before, and so it, it's even more of an appealing position, I think, for anybody in town that has an interest in recreation.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor? That is unanimous. The next item of business, we are in old business, is number twenty-five dash oh five two, a policy on conflicts and ex parte communication. We discussed this at our last meeting or the one before, and we, we're looking for clarification on a definition which we've received.
Yes, so I did ask Kristen Collins, town attorney, to give us some, some insight on to what we might be able to add to, to clarify. Really, this is a clarification of the term appearance and relating to bias and conflict. And I'm not sure honestly whether this helps or not. I think that appearance is, is, is still a little bit subjective, but that's part of what we have to grapple with and part of the reason why this policy is important, so we can have discussions around those type of situations. So I think it, it, it probably in, in that would help and will answer some questions, but I, I'm happy to, you know, to take it or leave it, I guess. I'll leave it there from my perspective.
Well, it's, it's funny that you should say I don't know if it helps, because when I looked at the definition, it actually made it me not like it more. It honestly almost says that, in a nutshell, that even though there is no conflict of interest, the rest of the board can just say, yes, there is. I mean, and I don't like, I feel like this, this just opens the door for weaponizing an ordinance. I mean, it, it's defined, everybody knows what a conflict of interest is, a direct conflict of interest, and I think we're all pretty reasonable people, not just us, but anybody who would sit on this board for the most part. And I don't, I, I don't, I don't want to go walk in the mud from years ago, but this conflict of interest thing came up at these meetings, seventeen times a meeting for the most ridiculous things back. I mean, it was almost like, well, I saw him talking to him once, so that's a conflict of interest. I mean, don't we morally know what is a conflict of interest and what is not? And, and if, if there was a board member sitting here that was gonna not abstain from a vote, that's a direct conflict, would we not call him out? I mean, it, it's, I, I don't know, I, I just feel like it's, it's an unnecessary vague term that it just leads to trouble. I don't like it.
Can I ask which term? Is it the appearance term?
Yeah.
It's not the policy in general.
No, not the policy in general, it's, it's, you know, adding the appearance, like, well, we define what a conflict is, a direct conflict with monetary reasons or family or, or, you know, in a nutshell, what it all says there. And then there's also this thing about, well, even if there's none of that, then it can just appear like there is. I don't like it. I, I, I think it's just, it goes way too far.
Where does the appearance word actually come up in the document, Eric?
Oh, I can't remember now.
I'm trying to find it.
In the three A. Second line under conflict of interest. It says in actuality or appearance.
So, so here's a, a secret, when we have the searchable PDFs, you do Ctrl F and type in appearance, and it'll take you to every instance of appearance.
Angelica's over there.
Okay, so on which page is that, Steve?
It's under number three, under the definitions, there's one.
So, so it's three A definitions.
It says, which may in actuality or appearance prevent a person. To me, the actuality is what should be in there, not necessarily the appearance, because we defined what a conflict of interest is anyway, and then we go even in the ex parte communicate, communications, it's all defined. So I, I just feel like it's a, it's a.
That same phrase, density also, right?
Thank you. Is that language actually out of MRSA paragraph seven oh seventy-six?
So I, I don't know if it's a direct connection there, but I do know that the appearance of conflict is contemplated in the state statute, and, and I think it is important to have it in there, just because when, when you're in the business of, of, of public trust, there can be things that are just a little bit gray. And when you're in those situations, oftentimes, things are, seem intractable, but by having perhaps a way for a peer review or a board-level review of what might be an appearance of conflict, you can avoid some potholes, you can potentially avoid lawsuits, you could potentially avoid a lack of, a loss of trust in, in the public process. And so those are the reasons I think appearance discussion is important, does belong, beyond the fact that it is kind of contemplated in state law. So I, I would encourage it to stay, that, that term appearance, but I do agree with you, Dave, that, that definition doesn't really help.
No. No, that's kind of the way I saw it. I was like, yeah, that didn't help, that made it worse.
Yeah.
I mean, you could have situations where somebody intervenes in a process, but it doesn't hold anything for them personally, other than the fact that you say that I intervened in a process that of someone coming before the board, but there would be no benefit to me personally, financially, et cetera. So I think that's where the appearance of the impropriety comes, because there is no direct connection.
Or, or it could be that, you know, somebody has a business and they, a select board member, and there's no financial benefit, they, they would lose money by, by donating something. I'm just trying to make up something here. And it could be that, that there's a perception that that might influence others towards a certain direction. There's, it, it is a tricky issue, but I think that the, the point of this really is to at least discuss it. And if the board doesn't feel that there's an issue with somebody being involved, then there's no issue. If there's a discussion and someone says, you know what, I'm gonna recuse myself from discussion because that's the best thing for the board, then that's, then that's great. And if someone says, which is sometimes the case, if there's a conflict, people don't almost recognize it when you're very close to something personally, it can be sometimes hard to, to see that, you know, someone might feel that, that a discussion outside of a board meeting with somebody privately, if you're on the planning board, that might feel okay to the person doing it because they think they're trying to help. But in fact, it's probably not the best idea, and that appearance, you know, even though it's not necessarily specifically, it, it might not be an actual discussion that has actual, actual consequences on a vote, could, could dissolve public trust. And so I think that it's important for those reasons. Yeah.
In the, in the, the flip side of that, Eric, and I hear exactly what you're saying, the, the flip side of that is, so if you get to one of those appearance issues. The flip side of that is, so if you get to one of those appearance issues that the one board member doesn't think it's a problem and the other four actually take this action to take him out of a vote, and then a separate situation comes along that's very similar, but that doesn't happen, then we get into this, well, what's a conflict and what's not? What, do we play by the rules here but not play by the rules here? And I think that's where we get, the gray area can get really muddy, you know, from both angles. Like you said, it could get.
Yeah, yeah.
It can get muddy in one direction and it can get muddy the other way.
Well, you need consistency and you also need to not have overuse.
Right.
I hear that loud and clear.
And it is just a policy. And again, I know you don't, you're not the biggest fan of policy sometimes, but I think this is one that does have value, Dave, I really do. And I, I would say that we're better off to try to err on the side of caution and take this step than, than to not. Because we, the reason we're talking about this is because we have had issues on multiple boards in the past, not, not going as far back as the issue that we're not talking about.
Right.
But, but we've had this stuff happen. And, and it could, I think we could benefit from having this policy, so.
Okay, so it's a second reading. It did not say that we were going to or not, that we were not, it didn't say we had to include it. We could, we don't have to. Does anyone want to make a motion about the policy itself?
I'll make a motion to accept the policy as written in our second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. So the discussion now would be to accept the policy as written with no change to that definition.
This is Sean. I mean, I, I appreciate the conversation happening around this. And I read a lot of different statutes and verbiage is always in this state, a very interesting word. My hopes are that the people that are implementing this policy are of like mind, which I think this current board is, and has the ability to make sure that they're not manipulating the ability to do something or have power over a certain policy by use of verbiage. I think we could do that in a lot of cases, but I think it's a good thing for us to have.
I think it's a valuable tool for somebody who may go rogue to be able to remove them from their position because right now I think this board is very limited in what we can do. If you had a member on a committee, I'm not talking about our board particularly, but on another committee who decided to, does it become very willfully destructive to the committee? We have the authority, I believe now currently, to unappoint somebody because we appoint them to that position. But I don't think we have anything concrete to say, this is a policy, you violated it, so this is why we're removing you. And I think this gives us that opportunity to have something to stand behind. And I can tell you, I've never had anyone removed from office or no one has been removed from office since I've been on the board. And, you know, hopefully we make good appointments to begin with. And only people who want to participate in a fair way are the ones who are asking to be involved. But planning ahead and avoiding lawsuits is also a good thing, so.
I'd add Catherine too. I mean, stepping back from that, I think this is an opportunity for giving boards and committees a little bit of self-governance. They have the ability to, to maybe control their conversation a little bit better because they know the ins and outs better than the select board, better than, than me in a lot of cases. And so if they know, if they want to manage a conversation and, and know what the pitfalls are, then, then perhaps if they see something coming up, they can address it. So I, I'd look at it not so much, that's definitely an impossible outcome, but I'd highlight the, the self-governance aspect of this too for any board, whether it's planning board, appeals board, select board, whatever.
Yes, it is just the three boards. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? And opposed? Three to two, it passes. Opposed was DeAngelis and Lindt. Ton. I'm going, that's not right, Catherine, come on.
You're thinking Robin.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, I've been called worse.
Oh, goodness. Okay, well, moving on. The Open Space Plan Public Hearing Follow-Up. This is item twenty-five dash oh five-three. Eric, did you just want us to have a conversation or is there something in particular?
Just to highlight the fact that the discussion happened, that we had a, a public input. The committee opened up with kind of a really wide open platform. And we're somewhat instructed that, that people wish they had something more to work with. And that's understandable. I mean, it, the, the plan is out there, but not everybody had the chance to read it. And there was a definition available, but it's, it's, it's still a little bit, you know, vague, I think. And that's, and that's okay to have a vague definition, especially when you're looking to revise that definition. So it was, it was probably about an hour long. We had a focus from the select board there and, and members of the public. And this was just the first of probably several public engagement opportunities that will be happening around this issue. And this is just an opportunity to acknowledge that the discussion's happening and encourage people to continue to participate in that. And I also wanted to give a chance for any of the board members that were present to, to say their piece on it too.
Just as a sidebar, one of the things that the Open Space Working Group would love to do is be able to add a layer to the town GIS maps of what they've designated as open space. And that would be publicly available, so hopefully I can work with Eric on that. And something we're paying for, I'm pretty sure he sits our including their price. So there's no real cost at down inside from doing the work, which is.
I think I mentioned this at the budget committee meeting. And we didn't really put it in the minutes, but we did agree that we would put the page from the CIP that talks about the.
Yes.
The funds. I'm trying to think of what they're called.
The Open Space Reserve.
Reserve funds. I was going to call them trust funds, but they're not. And that, that would be the part of the plan that would be put in as an appendix item so that the committee did not have to address how that money is going to be spent because we already have a plan. And it was, the funds were all voted in by town meeting. To expend them, of course, we would notify the public of what we're doing as we do with everything that we expend. And I think the suggestion was also made, and if it wasn't, I'll make it now. I think you should have a plan available for people to look at when you're going to have a public hearing. We heard that loud and clear. I realize this plan has been around for eighteen years, so people certainly had a chance to read it prior to the meeting. And if they didn't, that's on them. However, it's an old plan, it's a big plan. And to read all of that, knowing that people are going to change it, might seem like not the best use of their time. So I think having at least some bullet points for people to respond to would be much more useful for a public hearing based on what we heard. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to twenty-five dash oh five-four, Discuss Technology Planning and Upgrades. This is a report out from Eric and Jaren.
Yep, so I met with Eric a couple times last week. I really just want to confirm that the board is completely ready to move forward with the direction of eliminating the onsite server. And if for some reason the board's uncomfortable with that at all, I think we should reopen that discussion. But that's obviously the direction that I've been recommending that we go. And I just want to make sure that the board is completely behind that, I guess.
I'll defer to your opinion.
Are you and Eric on the same page on this at this time?
We are not. I'd like to move forward with assessing the cost and impacts of that model because I think that it may be, depending on how we structure our, even our email accounts or our backups going forward, that it, it, it's not abundantly clear that either going completely cloud or maintaining something onsite is, is a better value or even a better operating model. So I guess I, I would ask the board for some, you know, more time to continue to pursue that and look at both of those as viable options. I think we'll, we'll, you know, very quickly come to a conclusion on this. I'd expect by, by March, in conjunction with the end of the budget process, as we're getting ready to wrap that up. But I'm, I'm not there yet, but if the board wants to choose a direction now, that's, that's okay. That's, that's what, you know, that's what you guys do, so.
Do we have, do we have updated costs for that migration and user fees?
So I've asked for costs for that type of setup to, to modify what we have. I mean, I, I guess I'll, I'll put it this way. I think that we, we absolutely must and will and are in the process of moving certain services to the cloud. We're doing that trio. Trio's in process. I actually got confirmation today of when our training date is going to be and when our go-live date is going to be for Trio Web. But there are other components of this that are, that are related, including email, including productivity software, like what we use for our, our word processing, spreadsheets and things like that. And so I've, I've asked our, our current tech IT provider to give us a price for a modified, basically a modified type approach, where certain things are on the cloud, certain things are, are local here, including backup. And it might just be that we have a small backup here or a small server here for a local network for, for files. I'm still trying to understand all of this stuff. Jaren understands it quite well. But we, we also are pursuing still the costs for anywhere between twenty and forty user accounts on an annual basis and the cost to back those up. We're getting pretty close to having that ironed out. And that would be the, kind of, along with some hardware savings and other savings, we'd have to look at those two things and put them together to compare to an alternative model, basically.
So Eric, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what, what you're saying. So you're saying that one of your concerns is just, is related to cost. You're not sure that it's more cost effective to go in cloud? Is that what you're saying? You want to time to look into that?
Depending, yeah. Because if, if we have twenty email addresses at eighteen dollars a month, that's a lot different than forty email addresses at eighteen dollars a month. And I'm not saying we're going to have forty write-off or that we can't pare that number down and have a couple that are twenty dollars a month or even all of them that are twelve if we do it a certain way. There, there's a few different permutations. One of the unfortunate things with this is we're dealing with companies that have very rigid pricing models, but they're also not very transparent. And it, it's, it's hard to find out what it's actually going to cost you to, to run a service. We're getting there, we're figuring that out. But I'm just not, I'm just not ready to make a decision yet, I guess.
So, so cost is one of the things and you let more time to figure that out. But it also sounds like you, there might be just some concern on your part that it's not.
Well, so when you have cloud.
One of the other concerns.
Yeah, so, so the, the backup capacity and the access, right? So when we have stuff that's local onsite and we have files that we can open up and search, at least on the face of it, it's a little bit easier to do that when you have stuff right in your own backyard, right in, right in your server here. In some cases, we'll still have to get IT help to find things. But I'm trying to find out what, what's the best balance of storage and backup that will come close to meeting what our obligations are. And we've had this discussion, Jaren and I, about the fact that we have a vault downstairs that's supposed to have all of our paper records of a certain type for the, forever, right? It doesn't. I can tell you right now it doesn't. And our computer software, hardware will never do that either. But I want to make sure we put some time into finding the right balance there. And it's not that I don't want to do this. I want to make changes. I want to improve. I want to improve our security. And going, you know, to the cloud on certain things, improve security in, in, in most ways, but may open up for liability in others. Mechanically, having something onsite, it's more of a physical threat, I think, but there's also the outside threats. Jaren was able to get into our system pretty easily. And I guess what I'm saying is that I, I want to.
What's that mean, you say Jaren was able to get into our system pretty easily? I'm not sure what that means.
Well, he, he had the, he had the codes and he used them. And he knows enough that once he gets to one part of the network, he can get to another part. I think that's about right, but.
There are security concerns. I think most of those are addressed by going to the cloud. It just, Jaren, that problem plugs that hole for us. And the security concerns that I have at least, that won't be plugged by doing that, could be addressed when we do make some sort of switch.
So this is Sean. I, when we, I attended the GovTech Conference this fall, Secretary of State's Office, Office of Information Technology in Maine Municipal. There was a lot of conversations at the time about cloud-based AI and switching to that and security threats. There's also a lot of conversations and launch of a state of Maine constituent portal, which is supposed to launch January twenty-twenty-six, which will take the place of a lot of different things that Angelica currently does, right? There, there's like four. Open you up to other stuff, don't you worry. But, you know, there's supposed to be that opportunity. And I know that in, in those processes, there's a lot of conversation about not being cloud-based, based on security risk or whatnot. So I, I think it'd be great to learn from MMA, if there's recommendations across the state, but also towns of our size, what are they doing similarly? And I'd like to see what this portal looks like for us, which is coming free because we don't have choice, it's coming. From Secretary of State Office, it's a federal grant that the state has, which is coming out. I think, I'm pretty sure it's January one, twenty-twenty-six is supposed to launch, so.
Just a comment on that. I don't know if anyone else reads, reads MMA magazine, but there's been an article basically every month or the last six months saying, towns need to do this for security reasons. That's one of the biggest reasons, but public accessibility. I mean, there's a three, four, or five page article almost every single time. And I hope the board has read those. I do read those. I think that's a pretty clear direction from MMA of they want us to go this direction. And that's something that Eric and I have talked about is MMA is pretty loudly saying you need to do this for insurance reasons.
Go to the cloud.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard that exactly. I, I really haven't. I think they've said that we need to improve our technology, improve our security. But the, whether or not to, to do away with servers, I, I don't think it's something that I've heard specifically from them, but.
Maybe in your conversation, but in the articles that I have read that are directly from, which I welcome the board to go back and read those. That was certainly the takeaway I had from most of them is this is something that town should be actively pursuing quickly.
Just the fact that you were able to break into the system shows that we need to do something.
And I guess I'll say that was a mechanical issue. I mean, without the password, it would have been hard. The password's easy to get, or it was, it no longer will be once we have the new, the guest network fully set up and we don't have access. So there, there are lots of different ways to solve a lot of these issues. And, and Jaren and I have discussed a, a lot of those. You can do it this way, you can do it this way, you can do it this way. Here are the pros, here are the cons. I just am not at a point where I'm, I'm entirely comfortable making a final decision. I, I do think that what we're doing now, not going to work. We need to do something different. There, there are some hybrid type models where you have some services hosted on the web and some services hosted locally. I think I'm using the right terms. And I think that's a, a potentially viable option, but I'd like to do some more investigation to, to, to figure out if that's the case or not and get some costs from our vendor for that, for that option.
So I don't want to get into the weeds too much about it, but there's a lot of costs that are not considered when it goes to continuing to have an onsite server. And try to give a very quick explanation of something that I think probably everyone could understand relatively easy, is we've just upgraded to Phidium. We have gigabit service. One of the boxes down there we have is 100% because we have a server. It's called a Sonic Wall 270. Because of that, we're only getting half Phidium service. To replace that today would cost $1,000 just for the hardware. To upgrade to something that would give us some ability to expand in the future is a $3,000 piece of hardware. We eliminate that server, that goes away. Electricity costs, replacement of desktops, replacement of lab. Like, I could sit here and list for 20 minutes all the added expense that we have, which is why I feel very comfortable at this point, saying it's going to be the same price or it's probably going to be significantly cheaper. But if we do ask Eric to move forward, continuing to price this out, I think all those things need to be appropriately accounted for, because we're looking at tens of thousands of dollars that we don't think about.
Just in the hardware?
Just in, just in hardware. Just like, I can't buy the $500 desktop. I need to buy a $1,200 desktop, because things aren't cloud-based. Because we have a server. So I need to have the processing power to do stuff in my hand. So it's, it's, it is nuanced. It does, there's a lot of costs that people just don't think about.
Well, I think this is kind of back to where we started at the retreat. And I think we're at the point now where we probably need to set a date and say, okay, we need to have a comparison by this time. And let's have it include everything. So whether it's the cloud-based or it's the hardware-based, we've got to get all of those things listed on both sides. And to me, it's not just a cost thing. I'm not particularly concerned on which one is cheaper or more costly. Either way, I'm more concerned with safety first of the information and protecting the town. And then secondly, the efficiency for all, not just for the workers, but also for the public. You know, like when you have a portal, like when the Revenue Service opened the main tax portal, now you can go on and you can pay your taxes, you can set up payment plans, you can do all sorts of things without having to call somebody. And it's your personal information. So those kinds of interactions might cost more in dollars in terms of setting them up, but you're not paying a person to have to answer every single phone call and do every single process, because now the person's doing it themselves. So there's a savings there, but it's not necessarily what you would look at. So Eric, you had mentioned that maybe it could be by March first. Do you think that would be reasonable? You both can put together your lists and let's try and get a good comparison of not just the cost, but also the efficiencies.
Yeah, I think that we can certainly do that. And we're just going to continue to have to talk about this stuff. I guess I didn't expect this discussion tonight necessarily. Otherwise, I probably would have approached it differently. But I do, again, I'm committed to sorting this out and to continuing to work on it as a priority, consistent with other priorities, including the budget, which is right now my top priority. But again, this is integrated in that. You can't, I can't finish the budget until I know whether we're going to have a $6,000 or a $20,000 tech line. And both of those are low numbers, by the way. We're already, we're already probably 40,000 to 50,000 when you add it all up, but it's a lot. But, but it's, it's what we do. It's how we communicate with the public. It's how we get our work done. So it is, it's very important. And that's not lost on me. And I also understand the timeframe. So I'll continue to work with Jaren and we'll, we'll figure this out.
That sounds great.
I would just like to say one more thing.
Of course.
That is that, you know, we talk on the board a lot about how we want to try to take things off Eric's plate every weekend, right? And I think it's important to recognize that I would imagine that some of these changes would be harder, you know, it's going to be a learning curve for Eric, right? Is that correct, Eric?
It is, but I just want to say, I'm not opposed to learning something new, to having a hard time figuring something out for a few months, if in the end, it's a better product and result. And that's what I'm not certain about yet, because I'm not certain that Google and Microsoft are going to give me the access to information that I want or need to do better than what we're doing currently, because we all recognize that there are things that are faulty with what we're doing right now. We can do better. We might be able to do better by using those services. We might be able to do better by splitting the difference. We're probably not going to do any better by keeping what we have. So I think that we're, we're working that direction.
So do you think you can figure that all out in a timely manner without going crazy?
Close enough, probably. It's never going to be perfect.
And you will assist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. The more you do, the less he has to do.
Dave, you and I have hope.
I'll listen.
Yeah, me too. Right with you. Go ahead, Sean.
I was just going to say, you know, the municipal technology conference is in May, in University of Maine at Augusta. I think it makes sense, you know, to see what that is talking about. It's talking about security, digital literacy, inclusion, you know. So I think that would be a good thing to be part of this discussion, discussion, decision. I don't think that means that we're going to have anything that will be on the more of the menu. But I would just like to see what kind of information you could gather from that, too.
Yeah. And I'm looking at the calendar here. We've got a select board meeting on March 10th. So if we have that stuff figured out the first week of March, it can be in the packet and ready to go for the 10th. So.
Great. Well, and the important thing to remember about technology is it is always changing. That doesn't mean it's always getting better, but it is always changing.
I can't stay on a phone call anymore. I can watch something at lightning speed on a seven-inch screen, but I can't take a phone call past the transfer station.
Anyway.
I'm just telling you, Mike, right? That was live. That was free. Call me anytime.
Okay. Well, we've spent a lot of time on this, so.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you, everybody. I think it was a healthy and informative discussion. So we'll move on to new business, considering a first draft of the fiscal budget. This is item 25-060, and it's around page 40, I think, in the packet.
And we're 15 minutes behind. We're 15 minutes behind.
Who's our timekeeper tonight?
I thought it was you.
It's okay.
Oh, it's definitely not me. Dave?
You didn't elect me as the timekeeper tonight, so I wasn't putting the smackdown on the time.
It's a really good budget. It doesn't have to take really, really long. I read through all of it.
So I'll just quickly point out some highlights. And this, again, I'll just say this is a first draft. Certain departments have not been fully vetted. I've not sat down with the transfer station to any degree, really, other than discussing the wage structure with Teresa, which is reflected in this, but not much else. The budget kind of comes together in pieces. We have most all of the wage and benefit and insurance information input for all departments. We have had a budget committee discussion and review of the first group of departments, which includes 10 and 12, which are administration and maintenance, along with some discussions for 80, which is regional organizations, 81 county tax, and unclassified and general assistance. So those ones have been discussed by the budget committee. Next two, next week, next Wednesday, coming right up, we'll be going through the second set of departments, which will include the community services, trails, recreation parks, that type of thing. And then the third set is more of the heavy capital items. That's later on. But so these things come together in pieces. This is a first draft that really gives a best guess. I don't think it's going to be a sea change, really, in any one area. What I'm noticing is that we're doing fairly well with the operating budget. I feel comfortable with the increases that I'm seeing and that I expect in the operating budget. What I see as big numbers that are coming up that are quite impactful are the things that relate to capital items, reserves. And we've talked about those. We had that joint workshop. So what's reflected, a lot of that increase in our, in our expenses is related to capital. It, in, in that department, we're looking at almost over 9%, 10% increase. That's mitigated by other areas in the budget. So overall, we're looking at about a 3% increase in expenditures for the town. And that's offset to some extent by revenues. But I think that when we get down to it, once we get through all of this, we're going to spend a fair amount of time talking about those capital items and how much we value those and how we're going to pay for them. You know, this budget does include the first piece of borrowing for a salt sand shed at roughly half a million dollars over a 15-year period. So that's included in here.
That's what the bond part is for.
That's what the bond part is for. But that's only 10,000. Next year, that's going to go up to $50,000, because that's when the actual full principal and interest payments kick in. And then it stays roughly in that range for, you know, 14 years. So those are things we have to think about and how that looks and how we're going to plan for that, how we're going to account for it. One of the other things that I see here is that we have, speaking of revenues, where we've increased this year, what we're drawing out of the undesignated fund, A, because we needed to cover some of the expense increases on the capital side, and B, because the select board has said pretty clearly, you want me to draw down, you want us to draw down as a town, our fund balances, right? You don't want necessarily all that money sitting there. But what I will say is that this is probably the last year that we're going to have that level of withdrawal. We're going to have to start pairing that back, because the new accounting structure we've put in place pushes people, department heads, boards and committees, me, pushes everybody towards more conservative budgeting and spending. So that means less money's going into the reserve. That means less can come out. So as we do that, we're going to have to start taking the foot off the gas a little bit when it comes to pulling money out of the reserves. So we're going to have a few things happening at once, looking, you know, two or three years down the road plus. But we're going to have to start thinking about those as well. And then the other, the other item I wanted to point out is that we are considering, we'll talk about it later in the meeting tonight definitively, or at least get some direction on it, the idea of not assessing cable franchise fees. And that's a $30,000 hit, roughly. Pretty significant, not something that we can ignore. But we'll talk about it later. It's something that's out there and that has a part of the revenue picture. Other revenue areas are looking good. We've got a few small increases. We're going to be able to increase a fair amount in motor vehicle excise tax, because we tend to follow that one from a distance, because it's such a big part of a revenue stream and so important. We always try to stay, you know, healthy distance away from what that revenue might be, so that we don't overshoot, say it's going to be there and have it not show up. But I do feel, like I said, very comfortable with where we are, even though we still have some uncertainty. As things come together, we'll be able to iron, iron this out. But I do expect we will be able to keep the municipal increase, definitely, I'd say, under 4%. Hopefully closer to 3, and we might be able to do a little bit better than that. The county and the school budgets, I can't necessarily speculate on. I expect maybe a minimum of 6% to 8% for each, but I, I don't really know. I just know the county has really, they had a hard time getting down to a 23% increase for us last year. And they did that by some aggressive efforts. And I'm not sure that they can then continue with what they have without having to increase. So I don't know. That's just my gut feeling on it. And the RSU, I think that there's a strong desire to keep it low, but I also know that there are some things coming up that may or may not allow that to happen. And what we've traditionally seen is an average of 6% to 8% for the RSU, so I expect that to stay the same. So I'll stop there. I'll let you all talk about this.
Well, one thing you said is using more of the undesignated funds, and that's changing from 350 to 375, I see, in this first draft. However, it doesn't really draw the undesignated fund balance down. It's only down by $25,000. So that's not particularly significant. We try to keep two to three months of money in that, correct?
We do, yes.
And our operating expenses are approximately what, monthly?
Oh, I would say 200,000, not including education payments. Yeah, if you take away, not including RSU, operating for us, yeah.
So we try to keep the RSU in that, though, right?
We do. So if you add the RSU, we're probably 6 million, so 500,000.
Okay. So we're looking to be between a million to a million and a half, and we're still going to be at one point, almost 9 million?
Well, we're actually looking between 1.2 and 1.9 million is the exact calculation from the debt service, or the, excuse me, the fund balance page. So, and again, part of the trouble of this is that we are looking out really two years, because we don't have necessarily, we don't have confirmed audit numbers until the spring typically. And once we have that, we know what our last year's numbers were, but we're actually looking out to the current fiscal year and one year ahead to the end of that year. So there is a fair amount of uncertainty there. But you're right, Catherine, the $25,000 is not necessarily a large cut off of a 1.3 to 1.9 million dollar reserve.
Where are you coming up with the 1.3?
So if you look at page 55 of the, in the pink there, towards the middle.
Oh, the minimum balance. Okay.
So that shows exactly what the, what the calculation is based on the current budget. So.
Two twelfths. Okay.
Two to three twelfths.
Okay, there it is. Right. Okay.
Those unreduced fractions.
Right.
Should drive you down.
I mean, if we had 2%, I mean, two months, the two twelfths, that's certainly adequate. And there was a time period where we stayed fairly close to that. Having the three twelfths is really healthy. And I don't know that we have to stay that healthy. I'm not saying we want to draw down $800,000 or anything to really cut that, but I think it's very reasonable to try and spend down what you're saying.
Yeah.
Rather than borrowing more money at this point in time. Although you had mentioned in our joint meeting about needing to reconstruct part of Lane Road.
Yes, and we're still figuring that out. We have the RFP for that going out this week, actually, to get reliable numbers on that, on that work. But I guess what I'll say on this is that you see the trend. We're heading in the right direction. I'm very cautious in this area. You all recognize that. I'm happy enough to see the trend going in the right direction and see it drop by 25, 50,000 a year, recognizing that we're not going to be having the same amount of money going in. And...
And so that will drop it in future years, just because you're not putting as much in?
Yeah. And both of those things will happen at once. I mean, we'll be pulling more money out for a while and less will be going in for a while. And that's what's going to have a downward effect on those balances. And I guess the question's the pace, right? How quickly we do that? How quickly we get down to, I think two twelfths is a little bit too lean, honestly. And I think three twelfths is probably a bit too rich. But I think somewhere in the middle is appropriate. But we just have to recognize that if we don't do it the right way, we could find ourselves perfectly where we want to be, and then the next year or the next two years, find ourselves in a hard spot because we've overcommitted. And that's, that's my worry, and that's what I want to avoid, because the last thing I want is to have a 20% tax increase, because we didn't deal with one of the most significant revenue streams. I mean, you look at this, about the only thing that brings in more, more offsetting revenue than the use of reserves is motor vehicles. So it's a sizable chunk, and that's the reason why I'm so cautious about it.
And if you're not having a lot of new development in real estate, you can't continue to count on the tax base expanding.
No, we actually cut that in half this year. We were at 1.5% increase last year, and this year I'm only projecting a 3/4 of a percent, because as you saw, we're basically flat from last year. So even the values have increased, I think, really realistically. But we can't count on those big increases. You're right.
So that was my long way of saying, I think the numbers you put in here are fine, and it could probably be a little bit more, and we'd probably still be fine. So I think...
I'm more than happy to consider that, yeah.
I think the approach is, is very reasonable.
My, my, my biggest thing was really like you were talking about. What other, I think if we go, we do, we go this process... What other, I think if we go, we do, we go this process with this bond, we're bonded. I think we don't wanna have any more debt service than that. That seems to be the upper limit of what we have had historically, right? When you look back prior years, when we were talking about a hundred and seventy, we had debt service of about a hundred and ninety thousand with our last road bond. So, and that was the highest we, I think we got to. For me, I'd rather our debt service doesn't go up more than that. But I'd like to know, and I'd like us to just remember what other things are on the horizon and what could inquire, what can we fiscally forecast that's coming right now? You know, could it be that our contract is gonna cost more because salt costs more? Could it be that, you know, there are some more roads that we really wanna take inventory of? And I, to me, I just, if it makes difference that we need an extra hundred thousand dollars over that fourteen years, let's get the hundred thousand dollars because I don't know if we can go back to the bond bank again after doing this bond.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think the closest I see would be around twenty thirty, when we would wanna consider borrowing again. And even after that, it goes out for quite a few more years.
It's a long time, yeah. So I just wanna make sure, if we're gonna ask for a bond, and I think you all know what I'm saying here, just that this is the one that's gonna carry us and make sure that we're encompassing anything that could happen in the next four or five years.
Preach in the quiet, I mean, because I'd rather, I'd rather take a huge hit on taxes for a year and not bond anything than pay for it for thirty years, you know, so, but I know that's not.
Thank you choir. Thank you choir.
But then you have to keep in mind what the county and the schools will do, which is a pretty big hit to everyone.
No matter what, yeah.
And these community people vote on it, so, you know, you can't say that it's a shock, but but we know that typically our towns all support this school district. And so if it's an annual six to eight percent, we have to figure that that's what's gonna keep happening. So I think using the bond is a good way to level that out for people so that they don't get hit with a big increase from the town and the schools at the same time.
I always struggle with the deferred payment price. Look at what you pay in the end, you know.
That was a very grudging acceptance phase there. It's like, yeah.
If the bonding rate stays lower.
Well, I feel the same way whenever I do the bond calculations and say, oh, it's gonna be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a five hundred thousand dollar purchase? That doesn't sit well. And so I think it is something that, you know, I like to use sparingly, and I hear what you're saying, Sean, about it. And I think that, you know, we are trying to do the best we can with it. Our buildings, we have put so much money into our buildings that we've minimized risk in most of those areas significantly. Our fire department, we've upgraded our equipment. Where the next fire truck is probably twelve years out. We're doing quite well in that area. Our roads, we've maintained them, we're at a kind of a tipping point right now. This budget does forecast another increase in our annual paving cycle so that we don't have to borrow for it in the future because costs have gone up astronomically and we haven't necessarily, in the last three years, kept full pace with those cost increases. But we're gonna have to continue to build into that.
I think we do a great job of forecasting. There are only a few pages on these that I usually really look at, you know, that I feel like paint the picture that we want to talk about. And so for me, it's the debt service, for me, it's the big changes, for me, it's the graphs with the lines, the percentages.
The graphs with the lines?
Yeah, I love the graphs with the, you know, where it's our slopes. And I think that that's the piece that people quickly look at too. So that's why I'm saying that. People aren't gonna look through every line item, every unit, every code that we have. So when I, when we see anything that could have stability, I think that's where we wanna do that.
The only thing I would say to add to that is that it does seem like, if necessary, we should at least be open or consider, you know, reducing our balance a little bit more to get lower than, you know, somewhere like, you know, two twelve, two twelfths is one sixth.
Five twenty-fourths.
We could go to one fifth, you know, right?
Well, instead of one point nine million, you could be at one point seven million.
For example.
Yeah, I think we have a lot of.
Because you're at like one three and one nine. So if you went to one seven, you're not halfway down, but you're closer.
I think we should be at least open to that.
Oh, absolutely, and I am, yeah, and I am.
And I'd love to hear the budget committee's take on that too because you have some people with some pretty powerful knowledge of accounting and their opinions, interesting and really good to hear.
Sure.
Are we good? Eric, thank you. As always, it's really good.
I do read the whole thing, Eric, I'm just saying.
I wish that all towns had page, I'm gonna get to it, page fifty-three because that's the municipal tax rate calculation form. And that really helps us and it gives us direction. Bottom line is always what's it gonna cost everybody? And to have that going forward is really, really useful. Moving on, as Eric mentioned, we have item twenty-five dash oh six one, consider ending the collection of cable franchise fees. Let's keep this one succinct, please.
So I started off by showing revenue and expense history for that particular line. Revenues have been healthy. We've seen, you know, in the twenties, high twenties and thirties for the last several years. We are seeing things start to drop. I expect this year we're probably gonna be around less than twenty-eight thousand. And that's gonna continue, even though the actual fee has proportionately gone up, the number of subscribers have gone down and will continue to go down. Cable is not the service that it used to be and what we can all recognize, I think, that it is dwindling as more and more people switch to streaming services, especially with a new alternative that brings in better speeds. The challenge is that when we try to correlate that to the expenses, we do have the presumption that some of those funds would be going towards our peg station, including equipment and staff. I'll say that these numbers do not include some of the capital expenditures that we've made, which probably account to an average of two to four thousand a year, if I had to average it out over the last ten years, maybe. And so we're looking at probably less than half of the revenues that we get from cable franchise going back into the peg station, which is okay. I mean, we have a lot of revenues and taxes and fees that cover only a portion of things. Transfer station fees only cover a small portion of the overall operation. But this one's a little bit different because what we're effectively doing is putting a tax on a limited group of individuals and a group of individuals that, yes, they have a choice in what services they choose, but we're not taxing Netflix, we're not taxing streaming services, we're not taxing any other media. When this started, when franchise fees were put in place in the eighties or early nineties, when we got cable TV in Reed Field, it was a whole different environment. And we had the presumption that we were gonna have a dedicated single provider and they were gonna offset some of the impacts to the town by providing this money and helping to pay for our public education piece. That's all changed. And so we've had some interesting discussions with this board, with the broadband or the connectivity committee about whether or not this is an equitable thing to be doing, taking this tax effectively from people who subscribe to cable, who are predominantly probably older folks, certainly more than younger people in town. And so recognizing all of those things, I was asked to look and see whether or not the town had the ability to change that. And in fact, we do. We have our underlying cable franchise ordinance, which gave the select board the authority to negotiate and establish a franchise and fees. Also, in state law, it's widely recognized, clearly recognized that the select board has the authority to establish fees for things like this. And so if we wanted to not collect this, we do have that authority. As far as the ability to make that happen, we would have to give sixty days' notice to Spectrum, which I asked how they would respond to this type of request, and they said, yes, we can make it happen. They argued and gave me a bunch of BS about how they weren't gonna advertise it for us, but they always do that with our contract, they always argue about our contract. But in the end, we can pretty easily do this and pretty easily communicate it to the public if the board feels it's the right thing to do. And I don't need to know today, but given the fact that it's a thirty thousand dollar question, I would appreciate a discussion and then a decision in the next couple of months on this from the board.
So this amount that we keep getting from Spectrum is being spread over fewer and fewer people, so they're actually paying more and more yearly for this, right?
Well, it increases proportionally with their overall revenue picture. It's a fairly complicated formula, but basically they take what they need to collect and then they break it up and charge the residents that fee.
So if there were three hundred people subscribing last year and there are only two hundred subscribing this year, those two hundred are gonna pay more?
Almost certainly with the cost of everything going up and the cost of Spectrum's services going up, all of those things have an impact, yeah.
And they're caught, I'm afraid, sorry, this is Sean, that the, it'll still go up for people because Spectrum are a bunch of people.
Yeah, well, I'm kinda on the same page with you.
Yeah.
They're in a, I never had time telling somebody, don't give me thirteen thousand dollars.
Well, that's only the first half, too, just so you know.
Not this year. I think until we see a decline, I mean, you're talking five, eight percent decline over five, six years, we see a fifty percent drop off next year and it's really impacting people in town, maybe?
So I kinda feel like, I mean, it's not like we're directly charging people who have cable. It's part of their agreement. And, yeah, if you get Dish Network, there's all kinds of fees and taxes and stuff that go on that, so.
I would disagree, I feel pretty strongly that it is a tax on someone who gets Spectrum TV. Exclusively a tax for people who get Spectrum TV for a service the town is really not providing anymore.
But they don't have to have Spectrum TV.
They don't.
And Spectrum charges a price and this is what the price is and.
Right, but the town is imposing an additional fee on top of those customers. It's not Spectrum imposing an additional fee, it's the town doing it.
It's a pass through.
It's a pass through.
We can make that case with a lot of things, though. How deep do you dig?
Well, the whole point of having Spectrum and since this board voted not to put in an article to expand Phidium with town dollars because Spectrum was the available provider and provided a basic adequate level of service, is what we said. And it wasn't our job to have to provide something better. That is the bottom line choice for people because people don't put little wired antennas up on their roof anymore to get anything free.
I do.
I do, yeah.
Okay, let me put it that way. The general population, there is nowhere near.
Normal people is what she's saying.
I got twenty-three channels in my house.
Who doesn't have a ham radio, come on?
The majority of residents do not put a free TV antenna on their roof any longer. That was something in my childhood that every house had because there was no such thing as K-Walk. We had UHF, remember, Steve?
I've stood at the TV holding rabbit, don't worry, I'm not that pre-channel.
So I think it's, I think it is kind of a necessity. If people can't afford, it is cheaper than affording satellite or having internet and streaming. So it is a basic level service. And it is the only service that has a direct tax to the town of Reed Field. Any other streaming internet does not have a tax for Reed Field. All of those services have all those other taxes. Even with your internet, all have the library fees and the this fee and the that fee. So this is an additional fee on top of that that comes to the town specifically to provide a peg station. And we're no longer gonna provide a peg station. So do we think it's the right thing to do to continue taking that money? That's the level I'm at. I'm not looking at, is this a good revenue stream? So, okay, well, let's just take it, you know, screw the people. I think if we're not providing the service, then we shouldn't be taking the money for it.
I would agree with that, actually. When I first started thinking about this, I'm like, oh, if we were getting the money from Spectrum, I'd be a great amount, but we're not. We're, it really is another, kinda, I mean, it's a tax on a fairly small number of people.
Can't be that small, it's still thirty thousand dollars.
Well, how many people is it?
Is it like eight or nine, ten dollars a month?
We should be able to do the math on that.
I mean, I guess it used to be five and then it was six and then it was seven. I mean, it does increase.
Per person.
Per person, per subscription, right.
So let's say it's eight bucks a month, that's a hundred dollars per year.
Right.
Per person.
Yeah, above.
So if it's thirty thousand, that's thirty people.
And we can get more specifics on that. And if we want, we may, Spectrum is incredibly dodgy about this stuff, but they may provide us with, they're obligated under their contract to give us all kinds of information. They give us none. They know it's not worth us to sue them because it just costs ten thousand dollars to get a two thousand dollar answer. But in any event, I will ask them.
If it's a hundred dollars a year, that would be three hundred subscribers. So that's probably about what it is for thirty thousand dollars.
So I'm a little bit bitter, Sean.
So is this something we wanna make a decision on tonight? Are any of us gonna change our mind between now and having other discussions? Because if we're not, we can just make a decision now.
Well, nobody's bill is gonna go down a hundred dollars.
Annually.
Annually.
Yes.
They'll charge the same price.
They'll charge the exact same money and it won't come to the benefit of.
They'll probably charge more, actually.
Yeah.
You're saying they won't lower their bills?
They can't, right?
As soon as that tax goes away, you think Spectrum's not gonna raise something?
They'll put that in their pocket.
Yeah, there's no doubt in my mind. So every town starts canceling their franchise agreements. Spectrum starts losing ninety-five percent of that five percent, right?
Well, they don't get any of it, so that's the thing. They get zero of this money, it's a pass through.
Don't tell me they don't get any of it. They get half of it for six months, where'd you think that's sitting?
No, they, well, they, they do make interest on it, I'll put it that way, they make interest on it. But what the bill specifically says, you know, town franchise tax.
I know, we get it for lots of things, I'm just saying, right?
But what you're saying is you don't, you think that if we take that off, that eight dollar, let's say eight dollars a month off, they won't reduce the bills by eight dollars, they'll just keep it the same and hope people won't notice?
Well, they'll raise something.
It doesn't matter if they notice it or not, if you want it, this is what you pay for it.
Doesn't matter. They have the monopoly, they don't care.
Okay, so on the bill, it will actually change and it won't say that there's a Reed Field Town franchise fee with a rate. And that we know for certain.
And by the way, we went up ten dollars this year.
Now you get ESP in the porters.
Well, and so I understand completely your lack of trust. And I think one of the things that if we do move forward with this discussion, I would look to get a written agreement, a written statement that says, here's what's gonna happen, here's how it's gonna happen, and we want a commitment that you're not going to increase your rates. Or we could try all of that. It'll probably fail because they just don't negotiate with us at all. They just tell us what to do. But one thing I'll just put out there is, I think this is an unfair tax. I also recognize that it's a large revenue stream. One thing I was thinking about doing was maybe taking a two-year approach where we maybe cut it in half one year and then cut it out the next year, do a trial run. Something like that might work, just to head, again, to head in the right direction as an alternative, as a possibility. But I think if I had my preference, I'd just say cut cold turkey and get them to have a binding agreement that says, we're not gonna screw the customers because you created some space in our billing for us to do that.
Well, it would be ridiculous that in Fayette, the bill would be different to have the same service that it is in Reed Field. I think it has very standard pricing across the state.
So it is for their agreements or for their. So, so, so it is for their, for their agreements or for their, um, basic services, but there are towns, different towns have different franchise agreements and different rates. So some have three percent, some have five percent, some have two percent, some currently have zero. So
This fee.
This fee that we're talking about now, so that is one area of variability that, that exists.
But if a, if a basic cable subscription is sixty dollars in Reedfield, it's also sixty dollars in Augusta, it's also sixty dollars in Fayette. Doesn't matter who has what franchise fee. They're all having that same.
I think, I think generally that's correct, yeah.
Same price. You know, I mean, you can make that pass-through thing on, case on anything. I mean, for that case, we can say the sidewalk's a pass-through thing because we took nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the federal government, and it's my tax money, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
I would also love, so when you look at the franchise agreements for towns in Maine, there's not many that don't have it around us. So, you know, I can see Fayette, I can see Manchester. I can see Green. I'm just looking.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So I mean, so are they all still running peg stations?
Well, they're all getting the same, they all still have franchise agreements in, in service, so.
Okay, so I guess we will push this forward to our next meeting.
Shoot, we're already over.
I'll, I'll get some more information on it.
Well, we don't, actually didn't have an ending time, so we're not over.
It says eight ten on the, on the agenda.
It said beginning time, eight ten.
Yeah, I messed that up. I, uh.
I didn't see it beginning time.
Thank goodness. We're going back. We're both wonderful.
It just said it starts at six thirty.
I was gonna say start at six ten.
So we, Sean, Eric, and I will put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and, uh, hopefully we can all come to some agreement there. Uh, we'll go to the last item twenty-five dash oh six two, consider a process to complete the town manager annual performance review. Everyone was here last year except for Jaren. Um, I would suggest that we do the same process we did last year, which was we used a Survey Monkey process rather than sending hard copy letters out to folks, and we had probably, well, we used to get zero employee response. We got two last year. So that was a two hundred percent increase. I think we got better response. I'm not sure that we got more numbers of response, but the response we got, all of us, um, read through, and I think it was better for people to get something that they could click a button and type something in while they're looking at it. It doesn't get stuck on your desk underneath something. I think it's important to get as much feedback as we can from the various groups, so.
I did check in on that, Catherine, and so, um, we can reopen, and I did reopen those surveys. They were blank because you had cleared all the data, so I just want to make a point again that this is like a double blind. I basically, um, give Catherine the credentials to our Survey Monkey account. She changes the password and the recipient email address, so I can get, I cannot get into the account. Um, she collects all the data, compiles it, um, and then deletes all of the surveys and all the responses, or deletes all the responses, um, so that when she hands the, the control of that account back to me, there's nothing, I have no visibility of any of it, so.
And it's passed me because I'm chair, not because I'm special.
See, if you were, if you were Jaren, you probably could get into it.
I was just saying, so I wasn't gonna say that, but if we do switch to workspace, that whole rigmarole doesn't exist.
Well, it doesn't. We use Survey Monkey.
Right, but that's a service that's included in workspaces per account, so the chair could just do it from her account.
Gotcha.
No need to be doing this. Agrobatics.
Does anyone object to doing it the same way that we did it last year?
No, not at all.
And do you wanna just take the same pieces? I think what I did was I printed them off and gave them to each of you, and then we help hold an executive session. We report out on them.
It's fine, I mean, the guy did townspeople, the guy, the community.
I don't remember, but.
Townspeople, townsfolk.
Just fall with them.
Let's see, we have public, vendors.
I think so, yeah.
Vendors and community partners, employees, and.
Or committees, commissions.
Yeah, I think committees and commissions.
I think Dave did contractors, right?
You know, vendors.
Vendors, community partners, and you did.
I had community people.
You did the public.
Townsfolk. God, what are you, what are you calling him? What are they calling him? He makes fun of me.
Jaren, what would you like to do?
I will do whatever is a pleasure of the board.
Okay, so when we get this started, um, Eric, I think the way we did this was you asked Teresa or Kristen or Angelica to notify all the right people to send out the surveys and to post it on the town website.
Yep, I had staff support for that, yeah.
Right, and so if you guys can do the same process as last year, um, let's set a date. When do we meet after this?
Twenty.
We meet twice in February, right?
Let me check here. Calendar.
Do we meet on the twenty-seventh of January?
January twenty-seventh, yeah, that's one.
February.
Like tenth or something like that. Let's do it at the first February meeting. Set meet with everybody.
February tenth, yeah, and then the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Okay. So we'll have an executive session, um, at six o'clock on that night, so you can't have an assessor's meeting?
Oh, Robert, I like those.
Um, is half an hour enough time, Eric? Or do we need a half hour for us and a half hour for Eric?
I think a half hour is enough time. I don't think things are dramatically.
I think it was just a half.
Half hour total.
Yeah, if you guys do fifteen, twenty minutes and give me five or ten, I'm good, so.
Just enough time to pack that box.
Yeah, that's it.
And I will tell you that I finally, it took me a year, but I did finally write up Eric's last review. And I handed it to him today before we had this discussion.
Better late than never.
But I did find out that there has not been a review put in his personnel file, um, since he has been here. So that will be one, and we will write one up after this one, and I already told Sean, I'll, I'll tell all the rest of you, whoever's chair next year, I would suggest that you continue the process. I think it's important for employees to have something in their file that says, you know, I'm doing, you're doing well with this, and you need improvement with that, and, um, it's a good basis for your portfolio.
I'm sure I could make up one for three years ago for him. You can do four.
Um, if there's no further business, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
And all those in favor? Unanimous at eight twenty.
Not bad, thank you.
Look at how we wrap.